So, good morning. We are, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Athens County Regional Planning Commission for March 19th, 2021. This is a rescheduled meeting of our meeting that was scheduled for the previous Thursday, March 11th, 2021. At this time, we have, we are short of quorum. We have eight members present. However, we can, we will address some of the regular business of the Athens County Regional Planning Commission without voting on minutes or any, any other items that take action at this point. That being said, we can move to, on our agenda, let's see, we've got, we can start with announcements and updates. Do we have any announcements or updates this morning that anybody needs to share?
Paul, this is Jesse. I just have a quick update in case I have to jump off. There is a mobility center that opened up in Perry County. It covers the entire Region Eight. So, that's, you know, Washington, Hawking, Athens, Perry, Megs, Morgan, and a couple others there. But the whole reason for this is that folks in the entire region can call one phone number if they need transportation, and these folks will work with them until they get them connected to, to what they need. So, that number for that is 1-833-U-Y-O-U-G-O-G-O. I have a flyer I can send out to everybody, but it's a really wonderful resource for our region, and it's a great way to get folks to cross county lines. I know that's a big issue we have with people, especially trying to get up to Columbus and things like that. So, it's a really wonderful resource for us. I'll send a flyer out to share with the group. And then, just a really, another quick update, I want to introduce Paul Esherwood. Paul is the new Athens County Broadband Coordinator with HAPCAP. He's going to be doing some really amazing things, so I'll turn it over to Paul if you want to just give the group a quick, quick overview of your position and what you're going to be doing.
Please, thank you, Jesse.
Hi, so I'm, I've been in the position now since late February, and the position is funded through an Athens County Foundation grant. I'm working through HAPCAP, through the Community Services Division, and the, the plan is that, you know, it was, came out of a number of discussions with a lot of different people that there is a lot going on with broadband right now in a lot of different areas and a lot of different, you know, a lot of different projects being pursued, and we don't really have anyone who can try and coordinate or keep up with what's going on in all of these things and try and make sure that we're not overlapping things and that we're taking as much advantage of the attention on this issue that we are right now. So, that's basically what I've been doing, is trying to get up to speed with all of the different projects that are going on in the area and all of the different possibilities that we have. You know, I think it's a really exciting time because I think, right now, you know, we have a situation where everyone understands that there is a digital divide, but I think also everyone's starting to realize that that's a problem that can be solved. And we have this unique moment where, where I think there's enough resources being put to this issue that we can actually make a big difference. So, going forward in the next few weeks, things we'll be doing is we'll be looking at creating an Athens County Broadband Advisory Committee, and so we'll be reaching out to different people to serve on that, to help sort of get community input, local stakeholders their input into what are the needs and what are the priorities as we pursue different broadband objectives. And then, from there, we will also be working on putting together, modeled in many ways on the plan that Jesse has for the transportation, creating a broadband strategy for the county. And so, that's what we'll be doing over the next few weeks. If you have any broadband questions or you think you are aware of a, of a broadband project or a deficiency that you don't think has got enough attention or as you have, you know, please put it, you know, my contact information, I'll put it in the, I'll put it in the chat here. It's, and please let me know. I'm also available at HAPCAP. That's where my office will be.
Thanks, Paul. I'm sure there's a lot of stakeholders that are members of the Regional Planning Commission are in these meetings, so I'm, I'm going to guess, I'll assume that you've probably reached out to many of them already. But if there's anything the Regional Planning Commission can do to help, by all means, we're, we're, this is a critical issue for the Regional Planning Commission for Athens County and for the greater Appalachian region of Ohio. It would be really beneficial if you could to attend these meetings as much as possible, just to provide updates, but wait, I also understand that your schedule's, okay, great. Does anybody have any questions for Paul? Or comments? Thanks, Paul, and welcome. I think if, if it would be beneficial to you, we could do a very quick round of introductions, if that would help, and I'll start. I'm, I'm Paul Logue. I'm the Planner for the City of Athens and the Chair of the Athens County Regional Planning Commission. I can just go around. I'll, if that's all right, I'll just mention people's names and they can quickly introduce themselves. Warren?
I'm Warren Jeffers from the Plains and I'm a county, what, open seat, I guess, is the correct terminology for the, the Planning Commission. I'm a lifetime resident of the Plains and just really want to see this county kick in gear and get going. We've got a lot to do yet.
And Steve Pearson?
Yeah, my name's Steve Pearson. I'm an Athens Township Trustee right now. I'm formerly the Director of Code Enforcement in the City of Athens and the City of Nelsonville both. So, and obviously kicked back a little bit of semi-retirement, as you can tell.
Chris Meele?
Paul knows me. We've been to the Commissioners Meeting, and we appointed Paul to the Buckeye Hills Regional Council as well. And Paul's attitude is he's going to get this done for us. I love it. And he's already got, you know, I send him ideas and he's following up on them, so I encourage everybody to just reach out to Paul and make him earn his, earn his money.
Thanks, Chris. Greg Andrews?
Hi, Paul. My name is Greg Andrews. I'm a watered township trustee and a retired employee from HAPCAP. Welcome.
And Boone Troyer?
Boone Troyer, Athens County Convention and Visitor Bureau, and I am not in retirement, but it is Friday and it's also basketball weekend, so.
Gary Guzman, Mayor Guzman?
Um, Mayor Goose, Gary Guzman, Mayor of Amesville. I've met with Paul already. We've had some conversations, so, welcome.
And I know you know Jesse Schmesser. Amy Renner, Mayor Renner?
Hi, Amy Renner here, Mayor of Chanty.
Good morning, Amy. Let's see, County Recorder Jessica Markins?
Hi, Paul. I'm the County Recorder. Like Paul said, just unofficial, I'm not a member, but I sit in on these meetings when I can. So, nice to see you this morning and look forward to working with you in the future if, if that time comes up. Welcome.
And Mayor Sikorsky?
Hi, I'm Sam Sikorsky. We've already talked through email and I think we meet next week, so can't wait to see you.
And Ben Abfeld?
Hi, Paul. Ben Abfeld from the County Auditor's Office, Chief Deputy Auditor and kind of ipso facto GIS Administrator for the county.
Thanks, Ben. Jessica Adine? Jessica may be busy right now, but Paul, she's the City Engineer and Public, Acting Public Works Director for the City of Athens. And I know, I believe we have Mayor Patterson on here who may be getting his eyes examined, but I think you've met Mayor Patterson, the Mayor of Athens. And Scott Dunphy? Scott also works in the County Auditor's Office. And Luke Salfridge?
Hi, Luke Salfridge, Executive Director of the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council. We're a council government that serves 19 communities, largely working on community choice aggregation, so look forward to working with you. Welcome.
And lastly, Lauren Connor. Lauren, are you with us?
Hi, yes, this is Lauren Connor. I'm the Athens City Planning Intern, so I just work with Paul and sit in on meetings.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So, Paul, like I said, just feel free to reach out if there's anything we can do to help you out. It's clear that you're already working with a lot of these members, so that's wonderful to hear. And we are, I can certainly say we are all excited to, to see you in this position and to be working on this specific topic. It is more than needed in our region, for sure. So, we can, we'll move on to, to new business. Steve, the, I'm looking at Steve Pearson. The first item we have is the rezoning recommendation request from the Athens Township Zoning Commission. I think there might be an action that we would have to make on that, but if you have any background you want to provide, that would be helpful.
Sure. We've, we have a request already from a property owner that wants his property rezoned from R1, single-family residential, to R3, multifamily and institutional. The property in question, we've talked about before, it's about five acres at the corner of Connet Road and Lee Master Road. A company called LW Associates was dealing with the owner, Kim Bonowitz, to build a 67-unit apartment complex there. The same, the same company, LW Associates, also built the sandstone apartments on the Plains, so this was another project that they were planning. It was going to be OFA-funded partially, but they were going to be in competition with the WOTA Group that's building apartments there across from the entrance to University Estates. So, LW Associates backed out of the deal because of that. Mr. Bonowitz seemed to think that the reason was because a zoning resolution had been passed and his property was zoned such that it would not allow apartment construction. So, he's asking for rezoning. The way the statute is set up, as soon as there's a request for rezoning, within five days, the zoning commission of the township has to send a letter and the information to the Regional Planning Commission. The Regional Planning Commission then has, it's about 30 days to respond. You have to approve, disapprove, or make suggestions. So, it's pretty broad, the kind of comments you can make back to the zoning commission. They take that and then include that document in a public hearing that's required. The zoning commission has already set the date for that. It's going to be April the 14th, right before their regular meeting. They're going to have the public hearing that's required. So, I emailed back and forth with Paul a little bit for the rest of the members. I'm not sure if the Regional Planning Commission wants to set up a committee to make a recommendation back to the full body or, you know, if we want to, if we want to have all the voting members do that, you know, as a, as a huge committee. So, that's up to Paul how you want to handle that. So, I've already sent the information to Paul. I don't know if I've sent everything to everybody, but I can, I can send that to all the members so you can see exactly what Mr. Bonowitz is proposing.
So, if you could send that to everybody, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll send it out there, buddy.
And Steve, just to, just to confirm, you said there's a public hearing scheduled for, what date again? In April?
April 14th. That's a Wednesday.
April 14th, okay.
Right. The zoning commission regularly meets on the second Wednesday of each month, and they've just scheduled the meeting at 5:30, a half hour before their 6 o'clock regular meeting. Once they, once they take that information, then they'll send it to the trustees. The trustees then also have to hold a public hearing and then make a decision on the rezoning. It's kind of odd because very seldom do statutory trustees have any kind of a legislative authority, but, you know, this kind of bleeds into that. It's ultimately the decision of the trustees, if, if the map's to be amended or not.
Okay, interesting. So, we have a regular meeting scheduled for Thursday, April 8th, three weeks, I think three weeks from today or yesterday. I think we have a second Chris Meele, and we're thinking that might be Charlie. Is that correct? Charlie Atkins, are you present?
I'm here, Paul. This is Lenny.
Oh, it's Lenny, okay. So, thank you for joining us, Lenny. That, that does give us a quorum of nine.
I had a plumbing problem, sorry.
Understood. Hope those get it resolved quickly. If, do we have any, does anybody have any concerns if we, if we quickly pause that discussion and jump back to approval of minutes and establishment of quorum? If not, I am going to recommend that we jump back and I will call this meeting to order and with the determination that we have a quorum of nine members present. So, quorum has been established, and then the first item on our agenda would be the, or the next item on our agenda, rather, will be the approval of minutes from February 11, 2021. Thank you for putting those together, Steve. I know there were some edits that were, some comments that were made on the draft that was distributed a week and a half ago.
I move that we accept the minutes.
Second, we have a motion from Warren and a second from Mayor Guzman. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay, so we can move back into what Steve was just talking about. Since we do have a quorum, I would be interested to discuss with the, this, it's unlikely that this will be the only Plain zoning request, change request that we will experience as a, as a body. Does anybody have any thoughts as to whether we would want to appoint a subcommittee to focus on this issue? We could do it in an ad hoc basis, or we could, I'm not sure if we'd have to change our bylaws to add a standing committee, but I, we can certainly review that for the April meeting.
This is Charlie. It'd probably be better with a, with a committee, and that way you don't have to worry about a quorum.
Okay, that's true. Thank you, Charlie. So, if we, if, if we do have a committee, who might be interested in serving on such a committee? I don't, I, I would be, I'd be open to participating in that committee. I can, I'll, I'll volunteer myself for that.
I would be interested too.
Okay. Steve Pearson, I would assume you probably should not be a member as Township Trustee, but maybe you should.
There will be an opportunity also, Paul, to have this committee continue because we're going to have the same thing come up for Hopewell Health. They just purchased recently the property that formerly belonged to the Board of, the School Board, the old Plain School. The area behind the school building is zoned open space currently, and it'll have to be rezoned in order to accommodate any kind of developments that Hopewell wants to do there. So, there'll be a need for this committee to probably meet pretty soon. I know I've been in discussion with the architects for Hopewell, and that rezoning request is going to come through here pretty quickly.
Steve, just to double check, there's no, through the process of the rezoning change for an unincorporated area, the town, the county commissioners are not, do not weigh in on that with the, with the exception of through Regional Planning Commission or something. Am I correct? It doesn't, it does not go to the county commissioners for a vote?
No.
It goes to the township commissioners.
The commissioners' only input would be as members of the Regional Planning Commission.
Okay. So, right now, we have a committee, a subcommittee of Warren and myself. I would certainly recommend, if, if it's possible, that we would have the Athens County Planner serve on that committee once that person is hired.
I think that would make sense.
Okay. And I would, I'm going to ask, since we do have three county commissioners here, if, I'd be curious about what the county commissioners would think, whether one of them should participate or if that would be something they'd prefer not to weigh in on.
You're going to have to go to five, not, not just four. If you go to add one more, you want an odd number.
Well, good point.
I'm willing to serve on it, Lenny, this is Mayor Patterson, so if one of you would like to serve as well, jump in.
Well, why don't you add one of us to it? Why don't we put Charlie on?
Okay, Charlie, would that be, would you be willing to serve?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. So, at this point, we have, we have Warren Jeffers, myself, Mayor Steve Patterson, and County Commissioner Charlie Atkins, as well as the Athens County Planner. So, that would be a five-member subcommittee to manage, to serve for the Regional Planning Commission's responsibilities for rezoning requests within the Plains zoning district. I'll make a motion on that to, to appoint those five people to this subcommittee.
I'll second.
We have a second from Lenny Eliason. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any members opposed?
I'm a good guy. Thank you, you too.
Okay, the motion is approved. If it's okay with the four of us that are in this meeting, I'll try to, we'll make sure we have all the relevant information from, from the Plain zoning group, and we will try to convene a meeting in the next week or so. I'll see what I can do to arrange that. Okay. Thank you. And Steve, is there anything else you need to share on that at this point?
No, thank you.
Okay. And moving forward, the next item on our agenda is nominating committee and election of officers. That's something we need to bring forward a slate of candidates for the April meeting. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, actually, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the current slate of officers for the Regional Planning Commission, or at least the current officers, rather, myself as a president, and Warren, are you the vice president? I forget who's vice president.
I don't think so.
Steve Pearson's our secretary. We'll have to check through our, we'll have to check through our, what's that?
I, I could be wrong.
Okay, we'll, we'll check through our minutes to double check who's our vice president. In the past, we would have a nominating committee. It is Tim. Thank you. You're right. It's Tim Ware. Thank you. In the past, we've had a nominating committee that has handled that. It's been a, you know, relatively perfunctory committee. I think last time it was myself and Commissioner Eliason, and I want to say it was Sarah Mars-Maxfield, but I might be incorrect on that. Is there anybody who'd be interested in serving on, on a subcommittee to, a nominating committee to bring forward a slate for the April meeting? I think we'd probably be able to take care of that in about one, one 30-minute conversation.
I'll be glad to do it, Paul.
Thank you, Lenny. Any other members? Mayor Guzman, perhaps?
Sure, I can join.
Okay, so we've got a, I'll say, if we have a three-member committee. If any members are interested in serving for this as president, vice president, or secretary, by all means, feel free to, you can discuss it now, or we can, you can shoot me an email, or we can, we can decide that maybe you're the right person for the gig. Okay, thank you. So, Gary and Lenny, I will try to convene us to touch base on that sometime next week as well. Moving on, next item is old business, and that includes the, the ODOT virtual public meeting that took place last Wednesday, 10th. Does anybody have any comments or feedback on that, anybody who attended it?
We went way over the time allotted. It seemed that a lot of people left with the impression that it was a done deal, but yet, at the end, and once through the middle of it, they said that, you know, they still plan to make a decision, but they could also decide to leave it as is. So, I mean, a lot of people tried to say that, you know, that they were a little bit putting the cart before the horse with, you know, we've got an intersection that's outdated, and they're going to throw 2,000 more cars into it, or vehicles. So, also, a lot of people were frustrated with the fact that they were just sort of non-willing to consider some things. I threw out the aspect that, you know, our county engineer had sent them a letter recommending that he was totally in favor of closing the median but leaving Johnson Road open. And in that time period, get the intersection upgraded with roundabouts or something to make the flow better and help in that way, or to look at alternative ways to get a parallel road over to Columbus Road. So, it's like they said they would be willing to listen to that, but yet nothing seems to follow through. So, it's like they're not getting any big opposition, and people brought up the fact that, wait a minute, you're not holding a public meeting. A lot of people won't get on a call-in, conference call, or a Zoom call. So, I think they were feeling frustrated at the end that there had been so many questions from different people, and I think maybe they're sort of waiting to see, you know, how big this support is. I don't know if, like, a petition drive needs to be taken, or do we need, does our commission need to come out with a public opposition to their plan? But, you know, it left a lot to be desired, is what I felt when, when it was over with. Did anyone else take part?
Thank you, Warren. Mayor Patterson, did you have your hand up?
I do. Warren, you referenced roundabouts. Where would these, where would that option take place, on 682?
Yes, on the, the north end by where you come off of 33, the traffic light, and then at the intersection at the end of my street, which is just across the bridge, where you, the ramp comes up and the other ramp goes down. Also, the Drescher Edition Road Sunset Lane empties in there as well. And that's where Engineer Maiden had, had drawn up even, you know, a scheme much like they did at Logan, just now for Logan High School.
Yeah, yeah.
And here we set, making plans for a new high school. The football facility is used for regional tournaments. The basketball is also. And these people, I don't think, have any idea of what it's like sometimes, the traffic that goes through the plains. Now, you're going to put, you know, 2,000 more cars through this intersection. And as well, on the other end, with the two apartments going in across from University Estates, that's going to become a bottleneck. You know, if all of this takes place, and I don't think they're looking at the total picture of what's going on. I sort of feel that, and I even asked the question, is there someone that's politically driving this? Well, they didn't, not that they knew of, they said, but they didn't really want to talk about it.
Thanks, Warren. Hey, Paul, this is Steve Pearson. The, the comment period extends for 30 days and goes till April the 10th. So, anyone who would want to make comment can do that here for, you know, a couple more weeks. At the last meeting of the Athens Township Trustees, we voted to essentially double down on Jeff's recommendation that we understood that the median closure, because of 26 accidents that have occurred there in the past several years, was probably a done deal, but we were not in favor of closing Johnson Road at this. So, you close off the median and then see what kind of traffic pattern you get up at the 682 interchange. ODOT seemed to think they can just do some existing light, you know, signal light timing changes, and that will take care of everything. They also said that they were not going to put a traffic signal in at the intersection of Elm Street and 682, which will be the new entrance, essentially the new entrance to the high school. They didn't think a traffic signal there would be warranted, even a flash. even a flashing signal. So there were a lot of people that questioned that, you know, in the morning, essentially the rush hour, when everybody's trying to get into the school, um, how, how will that T-intersection right there function? So that, what the trustees are recommending is, um, the same thing Jeff did, close the median, leave Johnson Road open to the right-hand turn, then wait to see how the intersection functions. Um, any of you that have been through that intersection, it's kind of funky the way it's skewed. You have to look way back over your shoulder to try to see if, if traffic's coming either way. So, you know, would roundabout solve the problem? Um, did the, do the ramps have to be realigned to be more perpendicular with, uh, six eighty-two? So it was kind of, our opinion is, same as Jeff's, close the median, um, see how the intersection functions, leave Johnson Road open. And we'll be sending a written document, um, to that effect to ODOT.
Probably one of the things that took them sort of off kilter was I mentioned the fact that it is hard for us to get out of our subdivision due to the fact that, I'm gonna say sixty percent of the cars come up and do a rolling stop at the stop sign off, from coming, uh, from Nelsonville down, and with the fact within the timing of the lights, you've got people not stopping all the way, or semi's that roll around there also, and the fact that for the ramp going north and that gets off the traffic light, I can tell you, umpteen times, I sat there at that light, and there's a sign that there's no right turns on the light, period, because of the Whispering Pines is, is right next, and people will be turning in when that light gives them the right to turn, and they'd be turning into them. I've seen cars turn both ways. I've seen them even turn the left and go across the bridge on a red light. So this sort of caused their eyebrow to go up, and, and, uh, the gentleman that was running the meeting said, well, that, that falls under my safety area. I'll be looking into that. So whether he does or not, I don't know, but I think, I think this commission needs to take a stand similar to what, if not identical to what the township trustees have done. And to my knowledge, the Dover Township trustees did not even bother to call in for that. And, you know, here we set that both intersections are in Dover Township.
Steve, was it unanimous for the township trustees?
Yes. Yes, it was. And we essentially wanted to, and this kind of came out of a discussion where there was an amendment to the minutes. Jeff wanted me to clear up the minutes from the last meeting, because there was some question about that he thinks that the intersection should be rebuilt prior to closing off the median. Um, that's what I thought Jeff had said, but he corrected me on that, um, saying that the median closure probably was just such a high safety concern that it was going to be done. But then, essentially, then wait and see what that does to the traffic path. Um, don't, you know, do the traffic, ODOT, do the traffic, you know, signal changes you need to do, um, at six eighty-two, the ones that you've run through your computer model, and then see how everything functions. Because if you close off Johnson Road, you're really gonna back traffic up. I mean, think about, come out, most of the cars that come out, let me put it this way, when you come out of Johnson Road, you can't go across, you can't turn left. Think of all those cars that make that right-hand turn every day. And if you close that off, then you're forcing traffic down to the Union, Union six eighty-two intersection at the back end of town, or you're pushing more traffic up to that intersection up by Warren's house. Um, so why, why, why throw a whole plan out there? Close off Johnson, close off the median. If you've got a reverse course, then, boy, you've really got a problem. And I can't see ODOT backing up, you know what I'm saying? Once Johnson Road is closed, it's closed. Why not leave it open for a little while and see how that, how that functions?
Yeah, 'cause they're leaving River Road open.
Right. Yeah, that was the point I was gonna make, that they're leaving River Road open and gonna improve, actually improve River Road a little bit for, uh, access, is what they indicated, because it's subpar. So if you're gonna do that side of the road, you might as well keep the other side of the road open the same way, because you can't make the argument that there's, you know, more traffic one way or the other coming.
I agree with you, Lenny. Um, as a suggestion, Paul, how many voting members do we have for the Plan, Regional Planning Commission right now?
We have ten members now, right now.
Yeah, we have ten members present, Mayor.
Ten members, and this is my own opinion, so I'll just share it as an opinion. I would feel that if we're gonna do a, a, make a statement as the Regional Planning Commission, that it would need to be unanimous coming from all of us. Um, I, I kind of have an issue if we have one or two people who are, who don't feel this way, and it comes, and yet a letter comes from the Regional Planning Commission saying we're opposed to this, if that makes sense to everybody. I would.
It does to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I think another thing to say, too, if you drive to Columbus, think about Canal Winchester, where the SA gas station's at. They closed that median off several years ago, but they didn't close off any of the, you know, right-hand turns, um, in and out of the adjacent roads. And look how much more traffic there is right there. Um, um, and there, there are ways, even from the, the, uh, the Village of Canal Winchester to get out of both ends. They've got, you know, they've got intersections at both ends of Canal Winchester, yet they left that right turn out of the Village open, so you can turn and go to Lancaster. Um, I'll admit, it's a chore to get in that SA gas station and get turned right and head to Columbus, but they didn't close it off. You know?
So again, let me throw out, let me, let me make a motion. Um, and that motion is that we send a letter in, in objection to them closing completely that intersection, uh, to have a more thorough, broader study of traffic flow of all of six eighty-two. Steve, you brought it up, you know, with the potential vote of development, um, here in the city of Athens, six eighty-two is gonna have impacts on that end. Um, I, I just think there needs a, needs to be a, a more regionalized study of not just that intersection, of everything flowing through there, because I agree with everyone, that I think there's, I think it's foolish in not recognizing the, the totality of the impacts, um, of, of not just the plains, of a larger area. So.
And Paul, doesn't the city of Athens have a plan right now to build a roundabout at Union sixty-two?
Uh, well, I'll let Jessica Dine speak to that. Jessica's on.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, the city applied last year for, uh, safety funds for that intersection, and ODOT said it, it sounded like a good project, but more study was needed. So it's something that I need to work with Eric Davis on. But they're, they're aware of the city's concerns that closing Johnson Road would increase traffic at that intersection.
I had put in the chat, too. I know it's less significant than the traffic and the safety concerns, however, there's a handful of businesses right there that would definitely suffer. And also the case with the high school being there. I'm coaching high school track and field. Just to get to the high school, it may affect busing and all the sports programs and any programs that the school has as well.
Thanks, Boone. There's a church down there, you know, there's, yeah, there's a lot that would be impacted.
Was, can anybody fill us in, um, since, uh, the county engineer is not present this morning, and I, I'm not asking anybody to speak on his behalf, but did he give any comment at the public hearing last week, or has he sent any written public comment? Do we know?
He submitted, yeah, he submitted a letter.
Okay.
But he didn't attend the meeting.
Okay.
And I think he had, you know, like a drawing of the area emphasizing what needed to be done, you know, it was, it was well laid out. In fact, I think he shared it a month or so ago with us.
He probably did. Yeah. I, I sent a letter to ODOT, um, endorsing his plan.
Okay.
That talked about closing the median and leaving Johnson Road open.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, uh, Jeff's email, um, uh, Jeff's letter is in an email that he sent to all of us, uh, in a reply on, uh, Wednesday, March tenth, at about three forty in the afternoon, if anybody wants to review it. Thank you for, thank you for reminding me of that. And his, his letter's dated February fourth, twenty twenty. I can, uh, I can probably share it if anybody wants to see it really quick. I think, I just wanted to make sure if we're going to send something to ODOT, that we're not, um, we're not in disagreement with our county engineer, I suppose, as a voting, even though he's not present, I think. Uh, or if we do have any disagreement with something that, uh, the county engineer says that we make sure that we've discussed that. Um, I don't think we are in disagreement, though.
Yep. That's the basic framework the trustees use, too. We wanted to, we wanted to have a common opinion, a common outlook, um, with our county engineer, so that's why we essentially are doubling down on his letter.
Mm-hmm.
Can we get a second to Steve's motion?
Not yet, no, we don't.
When, before we do that, um, one of the things I would suggest is that, um, Steve put it pretty clear that we would object to the closing of Johnson Road and support the engineers, uh, the Athens County engineer's recommendation for the, uh, median, and make that our, our letter, that we support that, and we could, uh, you know, just have that strong objection and support what he has already recommended.
Okay.
That sounds good, Lenny.
And then Mayor Patterson. Now, let, let, Lenny, just to clarify, when Mayor Patterson made his motion, he said, um, objecting to the closing and requesting, um, a more thorough, broader study of, of six eighty-two in the plains to better understand how this might impact other areas and the ripple effects, and then also supporting, uh, what County Engineer Jeff Maiden said. So is that the, is that the second that you made there, Lenny?
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion?
Can we also send this letter to Jay Edwards?
Sure.
Sure.
Is there anybody else we would wanna see see?
And Hoagland.
Hoagland.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Um, further discussion, uh, we'll make sure to send it to, uh, State Representative Jay Edwards and State Senator Frank Hoagland. Uh, any further discussion? Okay. I know Mayor Patterson was requesting, uh, a unanimous vote on that, so let's, uh, all in favor? Aye.
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 Do we have any members opposed? Okay. Uh, I will volunteer to work on that letter, if that's okay, and I, I'll, uh, do we have another meeting where we can bring this forward, or do we need to just send it along based on those stipulations?
April tenth, the last day, so for comment.
You can send it along, Paul. I think, uh, just as pretty clear, you circulated among a couple people to review it. Uh, I think it can go forward.
I can do that. I'll work, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll put together a draft, and I'll send it out to a couple people, and I'll, I'll, uh, uh, I'll touch base with Laura Olbers on it as well, since she's, uh, um, working in the Regional Planning Commission office.
Paul, um, when you craft this letter, you know, we all don't, as, as voting members, don't need to actually sign on, but would you put the list of all that were here that voted, uh, to approve this? Thank you.
Can do. Okay, thank you, great. All right, so moving on, um, I'm sure some people are probably short for time, uh, but we've had a great discussion so far. Uh, next item is our continuing discussions. Uh, do we have anything relating to the fifty corridor?
Construction's moving along. You can see pipe sitting out there on Route fifty, and, uh,
Thank you, Lenny. And next item, uh, any updates on electric aggregation at this, right now?
Real quick, uh, running balance for the carbon fee is sixty seven, sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. Um, again, that's on the SOTEC webpage. You wanna check that on a monthly basis. Uh, we have registered a new name, um, as we're, um, in some deep discussions with communities outside of southeast Ohio. We will now be the Sustainable Ohio Public Engineering Council. Um, and then lastly, we are currently getting pricing for the public pricing program, so any government, um, entity or nonprofit within the SOTEC footprint, if you're not currently being served by SOTEC, or you want us to take a second look at what you're currently paying, if you've shocked yourselves, happy to do that, and that would be a great time.
Thank you, Luke. Okay, moving on, uh, Athens County Land Bank.
Uh, we just tore down two houses in Trimble, two in Gloucester. Um, actually, this afternoon, from nine to one, we're doing a pre-demolition, waste diversion, and chancy on Main Street. And, uh, we're just continuing to, you know, just obtain properties and dispose them.
Thank you, Chris. And, uh, either, I think Chris or Lenny, one of you two may, um, if you don't mind, if you could mute. And, uh, the next item on our agenda is an update on the COVID-nineteen health emergency. I know, uh, I don't see, uh, uh, Health Department Administrator Jack Pepper on this call, but, uh, does anybody have anything they would like to share this morning? I'll share that I got my first vaccine shot yesterday, so I'm feeling pretty good about that, and I think a lot of other people in our community have gotten them in the last, last week, so I felt, uh, uh, it looks like we're seeing a lot of movement in our region to getting, uh, our community vaccinated, which is great news, in my opinion.
Let me add to that, Paul. It, it is great news, um, but, but please don't let your guard down, you know? Just because you've gotten vaccinated doesn't mean that we're in the clear, and that the light at the end of the tunnel is light as opposed to a locomotive coming out. So just be safe, you know, keep masking up. I'm, I'm preaching to the choir, I know, but.
But we have to hear from different areas and different people in order to make it effective. So you're, you're correct, Mayor.
Yeah. Absolutely. Okay, well, moving on, um, the next item would be our planners' report. Uh, the, uh, Acting Planner Bob Eichenberg is not present this morning. Uh, Laura Olbers, Laura, do you have anything you might wanna add? I think, I'm not sure if this is the first meeting you've been able to join us, maybe a quick introduction or?
Yeah, this is my first meeting I've been able to join, so I'm Laura Olbers, for those of you who haven't met me yet. I'm the admin assistant in the county planners' office. Um, just a couple updates off the top of my head. Um, we are making progress on the Guysville kayak put-in. We are ready to get that project rolling and should hope to be on the river before the end of the year. Um, and then we submitted a grant on Monday to potentially build a restroom at the Beaumont, um, bike path, like, trailhead there, so hopefully we can get that going.
Thank you, Laura. And do we know, uh, do any of the county commissioners, do we have any update on, um, the hiring of a permanent position for the regional planner?
Yeah, we've, uh, interviewed, we're, have a candidate, we checked references, and, uh, we hope to make a job offer either, uh, this, the, today or next week.
Great. Thank you, Lenny. That's great to hear. Okay, well, moving forward, I believe the next item will be, um, our city, village, township, and organizational reports. Um, it's okay, I'll just kind of move around my screen here, and we can, we can allow people to fill in. Uh, it is almost nine o'clock, and I'm sure, like I said, many people probably have to leave, so if we can try to keep these as brief as possible, that would be helpful. Um, first person on my screen, uh, it's actually Mayor Patterson.
Thanks, Paul. I, you know, I really don't have any updates. Um, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Uh, Mayor Guzman?
Um, not much new. The, the latest round of federal stimulus, we're waiting to hear what the guidelines are for that, because we're not really clear if they're gonna be the same as the CARES guidelines from last year, so, um, it's already been put out the amounts for communities and municipalities. The other thing is the, um, survey for age-friendly Athens County is about ready to go out from that. that group, I'm going to put a link in the chat, uh, about their Facebook page, for those that aren't familiar, with age-friendly Athens County. So this is the next step in gathering input and information about what the county needs to become age-friendly. That's it.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, Mayor Sikorsky, Sam Sikorsky.
I've got a couple things happening. This summer, we're getting six streets repaved with our energy grant, um, some sidewalks redone, ODOT's putting in a crosswalk across from the park and the football stadium. Um, we have our cleanup day on the same day as the county one, May fifteenth, also a seed giveaway, CFI is going to donate some seeds for us to give away to people that show up, and then whatever extra I'm going to plant in some community gardens that I'm going to do around town, and I think that's about it.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Um, County, County Recorder's Office, Jessica Markins.
Paul, yes, I do have one quick update. Uh, my microfilm department has moved, uh, for the last several years, we've been at the, uh, Job and Family Services Building on Lancaster Street, um, but, uh, last week we moved to Gloucester, to the, uh, to the same building that the Record Center is now, so, um, it's going to be a, a really good fit, having, I mean, those offices were together already at the Lancaster Street, and then the, uh, Record Center moved and it just, uh, we decided to move the microfilm there as well, they, those two offices go pretty much hand in hand, so, um, the Chelsea is the Record Center person and my girl is Wendy and they're going to work together very well. We know it's going to be a, a, a great match and, uh, they'll both be available to, to help anybody that needs anything from either of those departments.
Great, thank you. And from the County Auditor's Office, we've got Ben and Scott on here, do either of you have any updates?
Uh, not too much today. Um, Scott and I both kind of started working with EMA Office, um, developing some emergency response, um, maps, plans, whatever you want to call it, for dispatch for the Bailey's Trail System. Um, hopefully get something together soon that, uh, that Don can present to the fire districts, um, Chancy, York and, um, Trimble, it's be Jacksonville really, um, they all have a conglomerate in that, that, uh, trail system, so, um, other than that, just kind of business as usual, plugging forward. Last day to pay taxes is the twenty-ninth of March, if you haven't done so already. Um, that's about it, waiting for the CARES money to come in, like, uh, Gary said, we're not sure what the, um, qualifications or the, the, um, limitations of that money is going to be yet, so we'll keep our fingers crossed that we can use it wisely and for good projects.
Thank you, Ben. And Athens County Commissioners, do you have any updates this morning? Any of you? Steve Pearson, Athens Township.
Yeah, I've been meeting with your architect for the school system for the renovations and additions to the Plains Elementary School. Um, that area is zoned R-one, single-family residential, um, but a school is not a principally permitted use in that zone, um, it is a conditionally permitted use, so they're going to have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, to have their plan reviewed. Um, so that's coming up. As, um, I mentioned before, uh, I've been in contact also with your architect from Hopewell Health, um, their plans are coming together, the two big things are the area where they intend to build a zoned open space, so that will need to be rezoned, and also there's a platted but unimproved second street that runs right through the middle of that property, forty-foot wide street right-of-way, and more than likely they'll be, um, petitioning the commissioners to have that vacated. So it'll be something for the commissioners to watch coming up, uh, request to vacate, um, a portion of Second Street. Um, and then the only other thing is, we're already, believe it or not, in a review and a potential rewrite of the zoning code. There have been so many things that have come up here right at the beginning, um, that are, you know, causing administrative concerns that there's some clarification that's needed, so the zoning commission is working on, uh, some rewrite, um, rewrite of the code on that. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, and Steve, just for your, for your minutes, please note that, uh, Tim Warrin is present now, as is Jason Morosco.
Yeah.
Uh, Tim, do you have anything to share this morning?
Just that, uh, we're working, uh, vacuuming and sweeping up all the stuff we put on the roads this fall, this winter, it seems kind of strange that you put it down and then you go take it all back up, but that's what we're working on.
Yeah.
That's about all.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, Boone, Boone Troyer?
Uh, I didn't have anything to report, but I have a request, uh, of this group. Um, I, I try to keep, uh, fairly decent notes on all the new properties and things that are going on, and I know this is not as significant as the actual process that need to go into all of this, but as these buildings, uh, and properties end to get, uh, end up being purchased and whether they turn into commercial properties or whatever it may be, if you could think of our office and keep us in the loop when those things happen, because oftentimes the commercial properties end up being, uh, tourism assets for us to use and put in our directories. Again, I know it's not as significant as the actual process that you all are going through, but if you can kind of keep us in mind and let us know as those properties go through, I appreciate that.
Sure. Thanks, Boone. Uh, Jason Morosco put in the chat that he didn't have anything this morning. Warren, do you have anything else to share?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, Jessica Dine, do you have anything else to share?
Thank you, Paul, I do not.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Patterson, it looks like you may have another update?
Yeah, if I may, I want to share a screen, I'll be real brief. Um, uh, one of the things I want to mention is that, and I thank you to Jesse Markins, you know, thanks for working with Paul Logue, with our effort to look at discriminatory language in, uh, land deeds, um, I, I want, do want to share this with everyone, they did identify, uh, a property right outside the city of Athens. Um, let me show you, not that I'm excited about the language you're about to see, uh, but it is an example of, uh, of systemic racism, um, and yes, right here in Athens and Athens County. Um, as you're reading through it, one of the things that I want you all to know is that I'm working with David Riggs. David is the Director for Development and Code Enforcement for the city, where we often review lands, you know, uh, 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 you know, people wanting to have a, um, do a property split, um, or other things that fall under the city's purview, I'm going to take this down. Uh, and what I've requested David to do is to rewrite some language within city code that is basically, if you're coming to the city with a lot split or anything else that the city has jurisdiction over with properties, that you have to provide your land deed, uh, the language, something like this typically shows up in the restrictions section of your deed, uh, and the city, if, if there is language that's discriminatory, systemic racist, racism related like this, that we will not review this until that is removed. Um, it's expensive to do this and it takes time to have your deed changed, the language in your deed. Virginia and Maryland are two states, and I believe Nevada as well, have, have state, a state process that streamlines, streamlines the removal of discriminatory language. Um, I have been trying for several months to get ahold of my state representative, uh, to no avail at this point, but I will continue to keep trying to get this, these, this Maryland, Virginia language to them, to our state legislators, to see if they would take this up and do something similar to what Maryland and Virginia has done. Maryland in particular, there's no cost, uh, to a property owner that wants to have discriminatory language removed. It's still a legal process that they have to go through, but, uh, there are no court fees, there are in, in, uh, some cases, uh, not even legal fees, that they have streamlined it to that level. I would like to see that in the state of Ohio, uh, but in the interim, like I said, we will, I'll be work, continue to work with David Riggs to, uh, make sure that we are not processing something that is continuing the systemic racism that we all know exists. So I'm sharing that with all of you, please consider this, um, I would encourage you to look at your own, uh, you know, property deeds, um, Paul is still kind of working on this, luckily, uh, they, Paul has not unearthed any others, but, uh, I'm, I'm not blinded to the fact that there still could be other, uh, pre nineteen sixty PUDs, um, subdivisions to where there could still be language that exists out there, but I, I, I find this extremely important for all of us to at least consider. Um, if, if I can be of any assistance and share some of the processes that we're going through, please reach out. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson.
And thank you, Jesse.
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment that the, the County Recorder's Office and, and your staff were incredibly helpful to, uh, to me and Laura Connor, my intern, so, and I appreciate the, the time you all spent with us to help us, uh, go through a lot of those documents, so thank you.
You're welcome, and Mayor, I will say too, that this has been on the radar of my state association's legislative committee for, uh, a pretty long time, so, uh, maybe in the near future, you and I can have a conversation and we can kind of talk about, um, you know, the viewpoints of the recorders, because it will affect many of us across the state, so.
I, I would, I'm open to conversation, Jesse, anytime.
Sure.
I will, I can also share with you the language in the Maryland and the Virginia, uh, um, resolution, if you want to see it.
Sure, yeah, that would be great, thank you.
Does anybody else have any final comments or anything for the good of the order?
Paul, I'd like to say, if anybody hasn't looked, the county's new website looks like it's up and running, it's much easier to navigate. Um, I mean, your eye goes right to where you need to go, so, uh, it looks great, um, I'm glad, for example, the plans for the fifty sewer project are up there now, anybody can, any questions that a township trustee might get, it'll be good, because I can direct them right to the county website, so, congratulations to the commissioners there, the, the website looks great.
Yeah, I agree, Steve, thank you for pointing that out. Uh, if there's next, if there's no, any, uh, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, uh, I will, uh, just point out, our next meeting is scheduled for, uh, Thursday, April eighth, twenty twenty-one, uh, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.